All right, we are live everyone, so welcome everybody to this evening's city council meeting of July 27, 2021. In the interest of the government's transparency regarding deliberations and discussions made by the city council and according to open meeting law, since this meeting was posted as a Zoom meeting, this meeting is being recorded by video and audio and will be conducted by remote participation. Additionally, all votes taken by the city council during this and future remote meetings will be by roll call vote. If you are calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you are watching on a computer or device, there is a raise hand button that you can press or tap to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications and to be recognized to speak. Additionally, all votes taken by the city council during this and future remote meetings will be by roll call vote. So if you're calling in, once again, if you're calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak during oral communications. So this evening, we have myself, we have Councilor Pat, we have Councilor Gilman, Councilor Holmgren, Councilor McCarthy, Councilor Memhard, Councilor Nolan, Councilor O'Hara, and Councilor Cox. So we have a full city council here this evening and also in attendance, we have our C A O Frank Cousins. We have our assistant to the C A O Chris Sicarenza. We have our superintendent Ben Lummis. We have our legal Chip Payson and our city auditor Kenny Costa, our city clerk, John Cinos, and our court committee is Sherry Carvallis.
And the chairman of the school committee is on as an attendee.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring them in right now. Let's see here.
John Dunn.
We do have John Dunn. We have our CFO, John Dunn. Let me get promoted panelist. And we have Jonathan and we also in attendance, we have a school committee member, Melissa Texar Prince. And I think that's it for our, oh, and we have our, I'm gonna bring, oh, we have our other city solicitor, Christina Basu also, and she is an attendee. All right, so let's get this meeting going. Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
The first order of business. The first order of business is oral communications.
All right, once again, if anybody would like to speak under oral communications, there is a raise hand button or if you are calling in, you can press star nine. So during the public, during the oral communications, the public have the opportunity at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communications shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the council, state their problem without debate, and the matter shall be referred to the proper agency throughout the mayor, office of the mayor. Resident will be notified within two weeks prior relative to disposition of same, and a copy shall be forwarded to the city council. Person speaking under oral communications shall be limited to three minutes each, and the council president shall not allow complaints to individual performance. All right, so we have a couple people. Patty, can you hear me?
Yes, hello.
Patty, name and address for the record, please.
Patty Emerald, 14 Myrtle Square.
Thank you, go ahead.
And I'm joined here with my grandchild Charlotte, so she's here too.
Awesome.
Okay, we have a much larger elephant in the room with regards to a dangerous traffic situation at our intersection of 128 and Eastern Ave. This intersection has the highest incident of accidents in our city. It was stated several months ago at a public meeting from a city official that mass D O T would be notified and a study of this highly dangerous intersection would be done. Did this study take place? What are the results? If not, when will we pursue this action? The E N F provided for the fuller project states 3,944 additional vehicles will come from this new development. It required an environmental impact report because it will generate 3,000 or more average daily trips on our roadways, providing access to a single location. It also exceeded the E N F threshold pursuant to construction of 300 or more new parking spaces at a single location. This massive project alone will tax our roadways. Will we wait for another accident to occur? Well, it just did yesterday involving four vehicles. Action needs to be taken from our city officials and that action should have been yesterday, not months from now. Let's make safety our top concern, not the last for our citizens. We need to look at this. We're going to be adding a lot of traffic to that area and the buses will have children in them. Let's do something now. Please. Please. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. All right, do we have anybody else that would like to speak on our oral communications? You can press star nine or you, there was a raise hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. All right, oral communications. All right. Former President, Council of McGary.
Morning, Mr. President. Oh, good afternoon. I guess it is your time.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Paul McGary, 4012 Trenton Avenue, Clovis, California. And as you know, I was a longtime resident of Gloucester and in fact, lived at the foot of Webster Street for 34 years. And I can say the traffic, especially at arrival and getting out times was a problem, but it was not an insuperable problem. It was, it was just a necessary evil that we had to put up with in order that the kids could get in and out of school. It didn't, it didn't seriously impede the flow of traffic in and out of Eastern Avenue and along Eastern Avenue. And I think that, you know, whenever you put in a project of any particular size, it's going to impact traffic one way or another. But I think the net effect of putting that school on Webster Street will be negligible in terms of the total miles traveled and the total number of vehicles over the course of a day. So I would, I would just like to be recorded even though I'm from afar and supporting that site and, and not being concerned about the traffic even though I lived with it for 34 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. We appreciate you hearing from you and I hope the family and you are well.
Thank you. It's 104 degrees here today, so be thankful for what you got.
Enjoy.
Thank you.
Likewise. All right, up next, Mary Ann, can you hear me?
I can. Thank you, Steve. Mary Ann Albert Boucher, 93 Mile Pleasant Avenue.
Thank you.
Speaking not in regards to the school because it is on the agenda and I, I understand that we can't speak about the school, but I'd like to speak about the traffic and regards to Gloucester Crossing and in regards to 128 and Eastern Avenue. For the record, for the period of February 10 through February 17, one week, the total number of cars generated was 54,082. The average weekday was 8,063 cars. For the period of May 23 through May 30, the total number of cars was 77,634. The average weekday was 11,970. The conclusion is the total traffic has increased from February until May by 23,552 per week or 48%. The average weekday traffic had increased by 3,907 cars per day, also at 48%. That doesn't take into the account of June or July, and that does not take into account the full count of the Halia Apartments, which they, we know and not filled yet, doesn't take into account the new bank, doesn't take into account what could be going on, the future development in and around our city. So I would like you to please, I'm asking you please, as our city council, to please look into this. As Patty stated, we had a four car accident yesterday. It is the highest accident rate area in all of Gloucester, stated by our own traffic commission. Thank you very much and have a good evening.
Thank you, Mary Ann. All right, what next? Marcy, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Name and address for the record, please.
Sure, my name is Marcy Sidlowski and I live at 26 Harrison Avenue in Gloucester.
Thank you, go ahead.
Thank you so much for just taking the time tonight to hear from the community. I realize that issues of progress in general can, you know, just come with a lot of complications. And I think that many community members have been reaching out with their concerns, very well intentioned. But I wanted to make sure that I took the time to thank you personally for your effort toward the new school that's coming for Gloucester. I just see it as such a wonderful opportunity for our community, important infrastructure that is long overdue. And I'm, I'm just so pleased at the effort that our community is putting forward to make this happen for our kids and for our teachers. Sometimes when I hear concerns, you know, I, I hear sort of a forgetting of timeframes, you know, school is not in session in the summertime when, when our community is at its height of busyness. So I think we all just kind of need to take a deep breath and really look forward to this opportunity for our children and for our teachers. And it has my full support. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Marcy. How's the baby doing?
He's marvelous. Thank you.
Awesome. All right.
Get ready, some paving, paving up there on Harrison Avenue this week.
Yeah, talking about positive progress. Thank you for that, too.
All right, Marcy, you have a good night. Thank you.
You too. Take care.
All right, is there anybody else that would like to speak under oral communications? You can press star nine to request to speak. If you are calling in or you can tap or press the raise hand button on your device or computer. Oral communications going once. Twice. All right, Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
Next order of business is an update from the school superintendent Lummis, school committee chair Jonathan Pope, CFO John Dunn, and general counsel Chip Payson regarding the combined school project.
All right, and before we do the presentation, we have Brad Door. He's in as a panel, as an attendee. Do we need to bring him in or is he just into listening?
That, I think it'd be helpful to have, I'm sorry, customer Mike, I think it'd be helpful to have Brad Door as a panelist. That'd be great. Mine.
All right, and let me see who else we have. If there's anybody else from, we do have Michelle. I will promote her. And and I think that is it. Okay, I think we got everybody. So whenever you're ready to present, you can have at it.
Great. Thank you, folks. Good evening. Jonathan, do you want to start off anyway, or do you want me to just jump into the presentation? I'll follow your lead. Except for that you're muted. So it's hard to hear what you're saying.
Jonathan, you're on mute, bud.
There we go. Thank you, Councilor. And we're happy to be here tonight to update you on the progress that we're making on the new school for East Gloucester and veterans. And we're here with Superintendent Lummis, myself. You introduced me as chair of the school committee, which I am, but tonight I'm here as the co-chair of the building committee. The school committee has a lot less to do with this project than, than the building committee does. And, and Superintendent Lummis is also the other co-chair. We're joined by John Dunn and the city solicitor Chip Payson, as well as Brad Door and Michelle Rogers from, from Doran Whittier, who are the designers on the project. And we hope we will, the superintendent will lay out a presentation and then we'll be happy to try to answer any of your questions. So with that being said, I'm gonna turn it over to Ben.
Thank you. Could I have sharing privileges?
Yes, sir.
Great.
You should be able to share now.
Great. Looks like I can. Thank you very much. Can someone give me a thumbs up if you can see the presentation?
We got it.
Great, excellent. So just an update to the city council about the East Gloucester Veterans School Building Project. This is, this is still an external exterior photo of what the outside of the new school will look like, which folks have seen that design hasn't changed except for we've added some, and I think we reported this to you in April, added some color to the media center exterior here, which is still there. One second here. So tonight I'll give you an update on our work, on ongoing work with the MSBA. I'll give you an update on St. Anne's and how that's rolling along because our veteran school is mostly there. All the, all the things are there at this point, but the people aren't, but they will be there starting in August. And then we'll give you a timeline, a two month look ahead on the timeline and also at the big picture timeline as well. And then sort of give you some detail along the way on each of those things. So just first of all, the big picture timeline, as folks remember, this goes back to way back to five years ago, 2016, as we began our work with the, applying the MSBA. A little bit later than that, 2017, we were accepted to work with the MSBA, which we've been doing ever since. Site selection feasibility study with 2018 and 19, a really important part of the process, and we'll talk, talk about more tonight is the schematic design phase. That's the moment when we determined the, working with MSBA, working with the designers, working with the city council and others, school building committee does determine the total project cost. So that was two years ago, or actually, sorry, more than a year ago, that work was two years ago. And that is the total project cost we continue with today and continue to, to stay at. And, and we'll talk a little more about that tonight. And then, of course, a really important moment was the voters approving funding of the project to build a school at the veteran site for the combined East Gloucester Veteran School, and that began the design development phase. There have been more than 70 open and public meetings on this process all along the way. Many of you have been in most of those perhaps. And so again, happy to be here tonight to give you a further update just on how things are going because they are going quite well. Review approvals along the way, just as a reminder, folks, the school committee, city council, and school building committee have voted on and approved the project in specific areas of it numerous times over multiple years. The city council, of course, has voted to include, to submit the project to MSBA and the Article 97 land swap and loan order and debt exclusion override and special high permit. And so you, that was special high permit, obviously, as you know, was just recently. So it's sort of this ongoing process of steps along the way that many parts of the city, the conservation commission recently, the traffic commission in the past, and then others are building, you know, fire and police have been involved, not in official approvals, but in helping our designers make sure we're building a, 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 a school building that's safe and secure. So just a really public project of this scope and impact has a lot of folks working on it. And we're working with many city departments on it. DPW has been a tremendous help in a lot of different ways. I'll explain that a little bit. Most recently on St. Anne's, but also being part of the school building committee as well. And then, of course, obviously, as I mentioned, you know, one of the more important moments of approval along the way was when the voters voted in favor of the project last November. So our MSBA partnership continues and it's ongoing. So, and what that means is that in March, we did the design development submission. These submissions I'll talk about in a moment, but they're all similar in terms of the content. It's just about updating folks with more detailed information because the product's moving along. So in March, then the school building committee and our product team submitted our design development submission to the MSBA. At that point, we got feedback from them in a few areas. Specifically, we needed to, we made some adjustments in special education, special education classroom. And so they gave us some specific feedback on that, a few other areas. Nothing really substantial, but that's part of the process and working with them in partnership. July 12th, so just about a couple of weeks ago, we provided the 60% construction document submission and then slated to in about two months, a month and a half really, September 10th will be the 90% submission to MSBA. Each of these submissions include the latest information on, on the budget and cost estimates, the schedule, our reviews and permitting, permitting process that's ongoing, costs, and then all the design documents. So it's a very technical submission, but for example, the 60% on July 12th included all the design and all the drawings in terms of that, you know, the goal at that point is 60% completion. So that is a lot of documents and designs submitted by Doran Whittier and our O P M C B R Hiri. And then at September 10th and 90% submitted, it'll be even more of that and more detailed and more additional drawings as we, you know, as they finalize those documents, which will essentially help, help, help us build the building. Let me go on so that, and then we'll get more feedback, both this, this submission from SBA and then at 90% as well. Again, so that partnership continues as planned. In terms of cost estimates and staying on budget, so we are still absolutely on budget for this project. That's the product budget that was agreed upon and voted upon in 2020. What has, what happens along the way as we submit the work to those milestones with MSBA is we continue to get cost estimates because the design is, was developing, but also the sort of external circumstances in the construction field and the economy also adjusts. So it's always, it's really important, this process, that we check in at, at specific moments. So we checked in on the, at the cost estimates for the project in March at the, at the end of the design development phase, and that meant that both our designer and our construction, Doran Whittier and our construction manager at risk, W T Rich, both do estimates on the design at that point in terms of its development. Those estimates from two different estimators came back very much in alignment and then also on budget as well. In fact, a little bit under budget. So at that point, there wasn't any need to adjust, to, to adjust the design or adjust the plans to, to, you know, to maintain on budget. However, in June, as the 60% cost estimates were completed, there was a fair bit of work to do. Those estimates, both estimates came back higher than the project budget. And so that requires, as it often does in large projects and almost always does in school projects, the value engineering process to go forward. You may remember that we did value engineering early on when we first were determining project budget. And that meant at that point, some design changes to get the project on budget in the very beginning. We did that again. Our project team did a lot of work to prepare the school building committee to make some important decisions on that to, to maintain the product on budget. Very importantly, those modifications were limited in scope. There are exterior design elements that were changed, some limited interior elements that were changed, finishes, materials, that sort of thing. There were no modifications to the educational program, safety or security. Those were not impacted. We had to sort of make adjustments to get $2 million, about $2 million in changes made to, to stay on budget. Again, a process that is typical, expected. And it, and it was really for us, wasn't due to changes in the design. It was really due to external factors in the economy, in the construction market. And we do expect those to, that area, as folks know, is still a lot of fluidity, a lot of fluctuations, a lot of uncertainty on all construction projects at this point, and we're subject, subject to that as well. Just a couple more pieces. So St. Anne, great news on St. Anne's. First of all, really want to give a shout out to our staff, our educators and Principal Fusco, all the veterans. They did a fantastic job of not only finishing the school year very well, but also packing up and getting ready to move. While they were doing that in late spring, early summer, the DPW, Arch Diocese, and also the W T Rich, did a lot of work on repairs and maintenance and improvements during May and June. Those are almost complete. They'll be completed this week and next, probably with a few, a number of items on the punch list going into August. But they've been doing that and made great progress in preparing the building for our staff and our children. We moved out of veterans two weeks ago. That was completed then over the course of three days. And a lot of folks helping out with the movers. And then teachers will start being able to get into building the week of August 9th at St. Anne's. So a few more stuff to do before they get there, but they'll be able to get in there and work with Matt Fusco, custodians and others to make sure that their classroom setup as, as they want to be. And then just a couple of things about the timeline. So this is a timeline that's been public since 2020. You see getting ready. We've completed all of those pieces, including moving out of veterans. Where it is breaking ground area and as you see, as we've said, folks, the, the beginning of that would be July 2021, including the sort of preparation for demolition, demolition veterans, site preparation, foundations, constructions. I'll show you a more detailed look ahead in a moment about that, but we're on schedule for that. And then you see April 2023, June 2023 is the completion of the building and then school opens in fall 2023 as well. So there are some risks to that timeline. It's concerns we have, but at this point, just sort of a more very detailed look ahead in the months ahead. As I mentioned, on August, teachers and staff completes the setup at St. Anne's. August 2nd, we're scheduled to begin abatement at veterans, which is preparing for demolition. August 16th, the construction fence and trailers are on site. And then at this point, late August, early September, demolition is slated to begin, continuing on schedule. I mentioned the 90% submission to MSBA and then early October, just as we said, all along, groundbreaking and construction is scheduled to begin as well. So that's the update for tonight and where things stand. I'm happy to, I think, yep, happy to might have myself or anybody on the team answer questions about anything on that update.
All right, do we have any council questions? Council McCarthy.
Yeah, Ben, the neighborhood, what can they expect for the abatement process and then going forward, the, the demolition process?
Sure. So what I'll, I'll answer, I'll begin that answer, Council McCarthy, then I'll have Brad Door expand a little bit because he's been through more of these than I have. So just want to make sure folks know that actually tomorrow, tomorrow's Wednesday, right? Tomorrow we'll be leafleting and passing out, you know, to each residence in the neighborhood, just this sort of schedule about what's going on. So they'll have a, a good understanding, not only of what's to come a little bit, but also who to contact if there are any concerns or problems, both by phone and email. There'll also be a link to our website so they can sign up for a regular update. So we will be reaching out to the, to the neighborhood directly, door to door really, tomorrow. But Brad, if you can just give folks a little bit of a sense of what abatement means and what they would see happening during abatement and then steps from there, please.
Sure. So Council McCarthy, with respect to the abatement first, really the abatement is going to be, we're going to be remediating that building. There's really not going to be a lot to see per se because all of that is going to be taking place within this, within the building itself. You know, there are some materials in there that we've identified early on. Those costs are all accounted for and were part of our early release package number one. And so we will have, you know, hazardous abatement remediation company coming in there. We'll also have representing, you know, the design team and the owner and industrial hygienist who will be watching, you know, what's going on as those materials are removed from the building, right? There's a state process that goes along with that, right? Our industrial hygienist is there to ensure that, you know, that process is followed. And, you know, they'll be working, as I said, inside the building. There will be, you know, some demolition going on within the building itself. So, you know, they'll be in there, you know, taking the material out. There'll be some selective demolition depending upon, you know, where those specific materials have been identified. And then, you know, after that, you know, the building will have all of the hazardous materials removed. And then we'll be moving on to the next phase, which would be the demolition phase, once the building is kind of all clear, if you will. So when we enter the demolition phase, right, then that will be, you know, more for people to see, so to speak. There will be a site fence, containment fence set up both during the abatement and demolition process. But then we'll have, you know, some, some larger equipment that will be coming in primarily because of the size of this building. It will be taken down essentially with excavators. That material will be, you know, set aside, right, categorized, and it's being set up since this is the lead project, right? To be, you know, categorized as recyclable materials versus non-recyclable materials. So they'll have metal piles, masonry piles and all of that. That'll all get taken away and transported offsite. We do have dust control measures that will be taken. You know, to be able to keep the dust down, right? That'll be the responsibility of the demolition. That'll be the responsibility of the demolition contractor as well as the construction manager. And it'll all happen pretty fast. So, you know, we also have set up, okay, as part of the construction process. We have vibration monitor stations that will be put in place so that we're able to go and measure. You know, vibration that takes place on the site as a result of demolition. We've also gone and, you know, put together a pre-construction survey program. Right, so that I think that we should have a pretty good handle on those people who have accepted that offer to go and do that survey. And then be able to monitor that monitor that with vibration monitoring program that we'll have in place. So, you know, that kind of in a nutshell is what will happen. The abatement process will take probably about a month. And the demolition process probably about, you know, six to eight weeks. We still have a little bit of work to do with the Conservation Commission, who we'll be meeting again with on August fourth. But, you know, that's our current schedule and current plan. Counselor Memhard? Through the chair.
Thank you, two items. First, Ben, if you could share with at least Counselor Pet and myself, a copy of the neighborhood leaflet that's being circulated out. So so we have a copy of that information and are able to help help address questions that residents in our wards might have. Secondly, if one of you could comment about when public access to Matos Field will be impeded in terms of use by the public in this plan.
So yeah, so Councilmember, absolutely, we'll get you a copy of that and we'll send it to all counselors. So people all have that information, absolutely. My understanding from DPW is that is that earlier this month. Or starting this this in July, games that were happening at, you know, from the league were either rescheduled. Or so that was all taken care of in terms of the softball league. In terms of access to the field, Brad, you should say this, but I I believe it'll be it'll be next week, is that right?
Right, we're going to be starting to, you know, put up the construction fence, right? So that'll start to limit access physically right from Matos Field. But I I have the same understanding as Superintendent Lummis that, you know, the notice has been put out that no longer are there to be, you know, kind of scheduled events at Matos.
Thank you.
I guess I.
It's like we lost Council of.
So I I have two questions. The first is somewhat of a suggestion. But I'm wondering if it would be a good idea if, in addition to going door to door, that you also send the owners. Kind of a summary of this, because if there's going to be noise or distractions or whatever, it's not a bad thing to let the landlords know. And the butters list isn't long and most of the landlords are local. So it just might be a nice gesture to do, that's just a suggestion, something that we did when we did the walkarounds with all the flyers. And then my second is kind of a might be a Brad Door question. And it's regarding, I'm just intrigued or interested to know a little bit more about the two million dollar. Variance in terms of what were the products that became really costly because of the economy and COVID? Just interested to know, because I know that that's been a challenge for the building committee to keep a close eye on. And if you could just kind of do a quick summary of that, that I would appreciate that very much, thank you.
Counselor Gilman, yes, we will also, we'll be, we're going actually a little further afield in just the butters. We're doing most of the neighborhood and we'll also send that that those notices to the owners of the properties as well, certainly. And I think Brad will back me up on this, but but the major contributor was steel, were steel costs in terms of the increased, you know, estimates. Brad, do you want to add to that?
Yeah, no, that's correct, you know, you had mentioned earlier that, you know, the fine for, if you will, was about two million dollars. And it was attributable just to kind of the market fluidity, as you said, and a million and a half of that was attributable to steel. So, you know, again, the real, you know, that building has been pretty much the same in terms of the design, you know, from a structural perspective. Which is where the steel really, you know, falls into play, we're talking about structural steel in this instance. And a million and a half of that was driven just by steel escalation, which is pretty significant.
And are the products still available, all the building products, or is it stuff that you have to kind of secure well in advance?
So, yeah, you know, with respect to supply chain, you know, we're definitely seeing some impacts out there and we're working, you know, hand in hand with the construction manager to. Try and address those, and I think that one of the benefits of being able to do this delivery method with CM at risk is. Is that we do have the opportunity to go out and do some of these early packages, hopefully to try and mitigate some of those costs if the market continues to be volatile. So we're essentially locking down, you know, a significant portion of the overall project cost through these early release packages today. Because, you know, we're taking down site, early site, we're taking down steel. And, you know, those are those are both pretty significant packages in the overall cost of the project.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Council Holmgren?
Thank you, yes, Superintendent Lummis, will the notices to the neighborhood be in different languages as well?
Yes, we will translate them.
Fabulous, thank you so much.
All right, any other councilor questions? Council McCarthy?
Yeah, if Mr. Door, Brad, could just explain the permitting process, will it be separate permits pulled for? The abatement, the destruction and then the building permit, is that the sequence that will be done in?
Yeah, it's my understanding right now, Council McCarthy, that we will be separating out the abatement and the demolition permit so that they will be running on their own. And the demolition permit may actually be phased along with the subsequent portions of the construction. Which is typical, but with respect to the abatement and the demolition itself, I believe it's our intent to go and. Modify our application, because originally it was kind of lumped in as one, and we're going to be breaking out that separately now.
Thank you, I I don't have any more questions, I wanted to thank you for for coming tonight and and putting this presentation on. I think it was important to the council and the public.
All right, any other council questions, Council Pat? Can you hear me, Barry? Did you have a question? Can everybody else hear me? This is Barry. Councilor Pat?
Here I am back again, I don't know what happened, I'm sorry. I wanted to thank Superintendent Lummis, Brad Door and Chairman Pope, et cetera. For doing this, as Council McCarthy said, the the most important part, I mean, we're as counselors, obviously, we're, you're keeping us informed and. You know, sometimes we need to try to get some things answered, but the most important thing here is that the public is aware. Of what's going on, the sequence, et cetera. So I want to thank you for getting these, getting the letters out, getting that type of stuff and having. Make sure that the contact, when you said that there's going to be a contact for people to have. You know, if they have questions for the process, make sure that that's highlighted and all the, you know, the pamphlets that are going out, et cetera. To make sure that people, if they have questions along the way, that they're able, you know, to bring them forward, thank you.
Thank you, Barry, Councilor Howard, you had your hand up?
Thank you, just a question. What will happen to the monument for Joseph Matos?
As of right now, the intention is to rededicate it, leave it where it is. We will have to do, because of the flagpoles, we will have to make some changes around it. So that it's handicapped accessible. Right now, it's it's too much of a grade down from the from the sidewalk and we're going to have to modify the area around it. So that so that it's handicapped accessible. It will, as of right now, the plan is to leave it in place and to, when the, as we did in West Parish. When the project is completed, we will rededicate the playgrounds and with a ceremony and invite the families and. And similar to what we did at West Parish.
Jonathan, you've been working with Adam Kukuru on that, I should say, you met with him and you're.
Yes, he has some ideas and we'll 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 pursue it further. But as how we might modify the area, but as of right now, there's no no plan to change it. Except the the area around it to make it more accessible.
Thank you, Jamie, Jonathan, will any public input on the monument and? How we display it, or is that just going to be, we're going to leave it exactly where it is?
Well, there there may be public input, you know, people love to comment and share their ideas on what what we should do. But as of right now, there are no plans to move it, except to, like I say, modify the area around it. The but it's it's not something that, you know, it is, if if for some reason. We were going to change it, it certainly would be well vetted. I don't I don't see that. That that's, you know, that people may have an opinion about that and we may pursue in, you know. Hearing from the public what they think about it, but we did move the stone at West Parish. It was. You know, we moved it, I don't know, about fifty yards. But it's still at the entry of the playground. So.
Okay, thank you, Jonathan, any other questions before we wrap it up, Councilor Pat?
Yeah, just actually a comment here. I understand that Chairman Pope and School Committee are working with Adam Kukuru at the Veteran Center, and that's important. But I think I'd like just a confirmation from either Superintendent Lummis or from Chairman Pope. That each and every elementary school in in the city of Gloucester, the playgrounds are named after a veteran. And that's part of this process of continuing to do that. And I believe that that's the idea here and that Adam has been giving some input to the school committee about that. I'm not correct, correct me if I'm wrong with that, if you would.
No, that's that's accurate, Adam would like to have better displays and better, you know. His feeling, as he expressed it to me, is that he would like the kids to be seeing. You know, the the names of the people, something that the kids recognize, because that's what it's there for. That's why these stones are there is for the people who use those playgrounds to. See and read about the sacrifices that were made so that they have playgrounds. So that's that's very important, how we pursue that further than than is, you know, a discussion, an ongoing discussion.
All right, awesome, if there are no other questions, I'd like to wrap up the presentation, Councilor Gilman?
Yeah, just just a quick note, I I don't remember if we introduced two members of the Building Committee. Our former Superintendent Rich Saffires on the call as well as Kathy Clancy. But thank you so much.
I can I just add one more thing, Council LeBlanc, before we go. I would just like to say, we are having a building committee meeting this Thursday at five o'clock. And what we're going to be doing, we talked about the two million dollars of cuts that we made. To bring ourselves into budget, but what we'll be talking about is. The possibility of including some of those items that we had to eliminate. Back into the bid package as alternates. So that we, if if the bids come in lower and we do have more money to spend, that we have the ability to to put them back in into the project, so.
Great, all right, if there's nothing else, I'd like to wrap up the presentation and thank you, everybody who attended. And also, Michelle, you didn't get mentioned during the thank yous, but Michelle, thank you for being here tonight also, even though. We didn't hear from you this evening, so great job, great presentation. And I'm sure we're looking forward to the next steps of this, I know I am.
And School Committee member Melissa Texer Prince has been on the call as an attendee as well, so.
Yes, all right, so that wraps up our presentation, Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
The next order of business is the consent agenda.
All right, are there any counselors that would like to remove any item from the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda. All right, it's been moved by Council Memhard and Cox, do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
All right, we have a second by Councilor Gilman and Holmgren, all right, this is awesome. On a roll call vote, Councilor Cox?
Yes.
Councilor Gilman?
Yes.
Council Holmgren?
Yes.
Councilor LeBlanc, yes, Council McCarthy?
Yes.
Council Memhard?
Yes.
Council Nolan?
Yes.
Council O'Hara?
Yes.
And Councilor Pat?
Yes.
Motion passes to accept the consent agenda as written on a roll call vote of nine in favor, zero opposed. Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
Is the Budget and Finance Committee report of July twenty second?
All right, I will hand it over to our Chair of Budget and Finance, Councilor Cox.
Good evening, everybody, I present a consent agenda for your consideration. There are two items on there, very easy, budget and finance after the budget season, so we appreciate that. If anybody has any questions or concerns, speak now or forever hold your peace. Yes, Council Gilman?
Thank you, I'm I'm just eager, if you could give us a one one minute summary of the eighty thousand dollar. Supplemental appropriation from DPW, just because the issue of paving is always an issue of curiosity and concern. For ward counselors, so.
They are moving the money from road openings, from the account from road openings. And permits to the Highway Force account to be able to use it for paving. So say like when National Grid comes in and they do a road opening and they have to pay a fee in order to. Put it back to where it was, that fee then goes to other roadwork. They they also put the road back without it costing the city, but there's a fee for those road openings. So the money is moved from that fee account to pothole filling account. And don't believe that's the technical term, but you get the idea.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Melissa, for the summary, all right, so we're not removing or that was just an informational point of the Budget and Finance Consent Agenda. So back to Council Cox?
I move the consent agenda.
Seconded.
All right, it's been moved by Council Cox, seconded by Council Memhard, any other councilor discussion? Seeing none, Council, a call for the roll, Councilor Cox?
Yes.
Councilor Gilman?
Yes.
Council Holmgren?
Yes.
Council LeBlanc, yes, Council McCarthy?
Yes.
Council Memhard?
Yes.
Council Nolan?
Yes.
Council O'Hara?
Yes.
And Council Pat?
Yes.
Motion passes on a roll call vote of nine in favor, zero opposed, thank you, Council Cox. Next item, Madam Clerk?
Is the Ordinance Administration Standing Committee Report of July nineteen?
All right, so I will hand it over to our Chair of Ordinance Administration, Council Nolan.
Thank you, Steve. So on the committee report, we have in order, especially Council two thousand and twenty one, zero, and Holmgren requested on a committee review the Human Rights. Commission's proposed amendments for the two thousand and twenty six Resolution. That was continued from six fourteen twenty one. Before we move into the recommendation and the vote, I'd like to ask if Councilor Holmgren would like to speak on this moment.
Thank you, Council Nolan, so the reason I brought this forward is.
Hold on one second, it's probably better off that we read the motion and then Jen can summarize her point for us. I don't want to have her deliberate before we get the motion on the floor, so do you want to go ahead?
On a motion by the Ordinance Administration Committee voted by roll call three in favor, zero opposed. On a motion by the Ordinance Administration Committee voted by roll call three in favor, zero opposed to recommend the City Council adopt the Human Rights Commission. Proposed amendments to the two thousand twenty City Council Civility Resolution. And we're going to strike whereas on this on this twentieth day of January twentieth. Strike whereas Gloucester is a special place because we have a long history of community. One, whereas the Gloucester community is unique and special, one with a long history. We recognize the need to work towards the inclusive and equitable community. Two, whereas in collaboration with the mayor and the city administration. The City Council is proud to continue our community spirit by honoring our commitments to. Strike, respectfulness, equality, non discrimination, and keeping all of our people safe. Inclusivity, equity, and safety for all in our community, especially those who have historically been discriminated against, ignored, or marginalized. Three, whereas any acts of violence, discrimination, or harassment do not reflect the values of the Gloucester community. It will not be tolerated. We are committed to examining ourselves, our community, and to eradicating any instances of intolerance. Number four, whereas the Gloucester Police Department's strike has been instructed by our city administration. Non strike is committed to strike, take. Non strike, taking all allegations seriously and will work diligently to investigate any claims or discrimination. Strike whereas if you fear for your immediate safety, call the Gloucester Police Department via nine one one or nine seven eight two eight three one two one two. Add therefore, the undersigned agree to the tenets laid forth in this document, and I salute.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Counselor Nolan, seconded by Counsel O'Hara. All right, is there any discussion? Counsel Holmgren?
Thank you, counselors. I brought this forward secondary to all of the unfortunate racially motivated crimes that have been happening in the country. In the recent past, and I asked the Human Rights Commission to review the original document, which was originally signed in two thousand seventeen, and the council's been signing it yearly. Just to see if they had any recommendations, which is what is in front of us tonight. And as I had said at last week's ONA meeting, unfortunately, right in our own community. There was racist graffiti at Gloucester Crossing and at Green Street Playground, and I'm grateful the police department is investigating it. And I see that the Vice Chair of the Gloucester Human Rights Commission, Paul Wasserman, is here. He was one of the people who worked on this. I want to thank Hannah Kimberly, the Chair, as well as all of the Human Rights Commission members for reviewing it. So I don't know if Paul, you would like to say anything or if counselors have questions.
Yeah, we'll get to any other counselor discussion. Counsel Gilman?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment. I had the pleasure of sitting in on the Human Rights Commission meeting when this was first introduced. And I think I think the conversation was excellent and Counsel Holmgren was was a major part of that. I think the wording is now crisper. I think it really was a good thing to share it with them, to let them review it and weigh in. So I will I will be supporting this, and I want to thank the members of the Human Rights Commission and Counsel Holmgren for bringing this forward. Thank you.
All right, any other counselor discussion? All right, Paul has his hand up, so without objection, allow Paul to speak. Is everybody okay with that? Okay. All right, Paul, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, wonderful. I I just wanted first and foremost to thank the council for taking this matter up. And to just. Kind of verify what the Commissioners, Human Rights Commission members have done. We did read a number of the various iterations. Everyone contributed to the discussion and we had a strong consensus, actually. Everyone agreed that the 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 additions and. Changes that we suggested were appropriate. And that by and large, we were very much in favor of the resolution. So everyone was on board with that. And again, I, you know, want to thank my fellow Commissioners, you know, for their work. We really took this very seriously. So I'm available for any questions if there are any. Otherwise, I'll be happy to just listen. Thank you.
Awesome, Paul. Thank you. Anything else from the council before we vote? All right, Paul, I appreciate you taking your time out of your evening tonight to be here and all your hard work on the commission. And same to everybody else that serves with you, so thank you for all that you do for our city and. We'll take a roll call. All right, Counselor Cox.
Bye.
That's okay. So. We're in roll call. Counsel Cox for the changes.
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
Counsel Holmgren?
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Oh, I skipped myself. Counsel LeBlanc, yes. Counsel Memhard?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
And Counsel Pat?
Yes.
Motion passes on a roll call vote of nine in favor, zero opposed. All right, great. Thank you, Jen, and thank you, Paul. I appreciate you.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Have a good night. All right, Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
The Planning Development Standing Committee Report of July twenty first.
Counsel Gilman?
There were no items to be brought forward. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
Is unfinished business, discussion only. City Council discussion regarding resuming in-person meetings continued from June eighth, two thousand twenty one.
All right. Now, this is the elephant in the room also. Eventually, we're going to have to start live meetings again. The I'm not sure where we stand with our IT. Frank is on the line this evening. He was in a manager's meeting this morning, and the administration is going to move forward with having live meetings starting September fifteenth. So I reached out to Chip the other day. We talked about it. We're going to draft some language to be included in our. When we do go live, because I know we haven't been live in a little while, then it's going to include a couple of small tweaks where we're going to. Talk about participation and disruptions and stuff like that. So Chipper and I are going to move forward with a little bit of language on that. He also said that it's it's basically my call when we want to go live or not. As you all know, I am a team player. I like listening to all of us. We're all a team. We are all one. So I would like everybody's input. If September fifteenth, is everybody comfortable moving forward with live meetings? I'm sure we're going to try to get a hybrid model going. I wouldn't have a problem running a hybrid model. That's up to IT. If if IT can't do it, I could probably figure something out where I can hook my laptop up to the the projector. And and share my screen with the projector, so everybody will be able to see it. But eventually, we are going to have to start going live, so Jen, you had your home, Counsel Holmgren, you had your hand up. Is there anything you'd like to say? And then we'll just, anybody else that would like to add to this, please feel free to speak.
Yes, thank you, Counselor LeBlanc. I would love a hybrid model if that's possible. I know the School Committee has been doing it successfully just to continue the increased accessibility to meetings that people have benefited from. Zoom has been tough to use in many ways, but I mean, our attendance has been terrific this whole time, so if we can continue that, that would be fabulous. Thank you.
Anybody else? Counsel McCarthy?
I think it I think it's a must that we have the hybrid. I think some people are still compromised. You know, maybe some of our own people are still compromised that would have to attend by hybrid. So I think that we ought to make sure that that can be in place before we get back live. I'd love to be back live. I'd love to be back at City Hall, but I think that needs to be one of the conditions.
All right, anybody else? Counsel Pat?
Yeah, just agreement as far as people being compromised in general, not just ourselves as as a council. But members of the public as well. And obviously, accessibility, ADA accessibility has always been a issue. Et cetera, so I I'm fully supportive of getting back to live meetings. It's very, very important. But at the same time, I I agree with the comments that have been made, the hybrid model, you know, if we're able to figure out how to include the. You know, the the Zoom or whatever we whatever format it ends up being in our meetings, I think will be nothing but a plus. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Counsel O'Hara?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate the comments that have been made. I believe a hybrid for both our citizens, taxpayers, as well as the council. Should be considered in this decision making. Obviously, there are the numbers are are not going favorably. So I think it's important for us to consider the hybrid going down the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Counselor Memhard and then Counselor Nolan?
I also would be strongly in favor of maintaining of making the necessary infrastructure investment at City Hall so that we can maintain. Hybrid meetings for our council and hopefully other committees and boards. Especially as Counsel O'Hara was just commenting, we are at risk of a resurgence of COVID nineteen or this Delta variant. More easily spread. We're aware of some communities in Massachusetts that unfortunately have suffered an uptick in cases and in hospitalizations and in deaths. It's worse in other parts of the country. Unfortunately, Massachusetts has managed this today very successfully, and Gloucester has managed it very successfully. But we have exposure and maintaining the hybrid model gives us some flexibility to adjust our our way of conducting business. In the face of all these uncertainties, so it's important to maintain a hybrid model.
Thank you, Scott. Counsel Nolan and then Counsel Gilman?
Yeah, for all the above reasons, I believe that it's important to get back, but also it could be any one of us that could be there, and the hybrid model would be a wonderful. Back situation to help people out. The other the other question that we have to think about is the timeframe. Are we still going to continue with six o'clock meetings or would it be seven o'clock meetings? Because that would be important to how we play in our regular work life versus running around to get to a meeting downtown.
Correct. So we'd have to vote, just like we voted to go at six o'clock, we'd have to go vote to go back to seven o'clock. Counsel Gilman and then Counsel Cox.
Yeah, I'm I'm very in support of the hybrid model, and I will also add for an additional reason. I think it's a wonderful tool to have when we can record meetings and go back and listen to meetings that we might have missed. And it's just, it's an incredibly good use of our time to be able to do that. And it makes us all much more transparent, and the appearance of transparency is really important in today's political environment. So I'm highly in support of that. The thing that I'd just like to make sure that we have in front of us before we do this is. That overview from the IT department. We discussed this at the budget meetings and there was a willingness to really roll up sleeves and look at. The costs of the equipment and how it's going to work. And I think that that's important to to make sure that we do consider. But I'm totally in favor of this, and I also think the what some of you have mentioned. The 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 amount of people that have been participating in these calls has been terrific. And I also think it's it's helpful when folks just aren't able to get to City Hall to be able to get on and listen to a call. So anyway, I'm totally in support of this, and I like the September fifteenth date. Thank you.
Thank you. The September fifteenth date is conditioned on if we are able to do a hybrid. Counselor Cox?
While I agree that we should be definitely working forward with the hybrid model. I think we should get Board of Health input into meeting again and reviewing the building in which we are going to be meeting in. If we should invest in air purifiers or something along those lines. The first floor conference room is very small. It's a very tight doorway. We should consider moving all of our committee meetings up to the auditorium. If that is the case, because I don't I don't think that the first floor conference room is appropriate. Place to meet anymore with the public because it is so small and it's just wicked tight and no circulation with air. I think we, for the remainder of the year, at least if we're going to go back live. We should abandon the first floor conference room and have a dedicated area to hold the committee meetings upstairs. And in addition, the air purifiers, even though it's going to be a larger room, but the air purifiers are going to be extremely important. And in talking about the sanitation of after each meeting and so on and so on. We are getting millions of dollars from the government in ARPA funds. I think that we should be doing a larger investment in our meeting space in order to. Accommodate going back in person, so. It would be nice to have somebody on the council to work with the administration. In regards to the ARPA funds and how they're spent. And it would be great to get an update from them on where we stand with the money and what the plans are. Because forty six million dollars isn't going to go a long way in the scheme of things, but I think we should have input into. Where that money goes for our protection with these meetings, so that's.
All right, awesome. Thank you, Melissa. So once again, that's why I like having this open discussion on where we all stand. I don't want to put anybody. As I said earlier, our General Counsel said it was up to me, whether I wanted to pull the trigger for live meetings or not. Your thoughts mean a lot to me. I don't want to compromise anybody. I don't want to put anybody in an uncomfortable position. But also, I don't want to have a hybrid meeting where we're all sitting up in the auditorium and everybody else is participating remotely. You know, so for us to leave our house to get to City Hall for a live meeting while everybody else, all the residents, are participating from home. We may as well continue the Zoom meetings from home if if that's the case where nobody. So what I'm trying to say is, I'm Joe Citizen. Why do I have to go to City Hall to watch a meeting and I could participate from my house? While we're all sitting there, so that's another thing we'll have to think go think about over the next several weeks. Joanne, can we put this back on? I'll I'll reach out to the administration. So we are independent from the administration's decision to go live on the fifteenth, as we all know. We're the legislative body and they are the. Oh, my God, I'm having a brain fart. Anyway. We go by our own rules. We don't go by what the mayor and the administration tell us. So for us to move forward with the live meetings by September fifteenth, that is completely up to us. So so everybody knows we'll be able to move along at our own pace. All right, Madam Clerk, can we put this back on in our first meeting or our second meeting in August for an update? So that way we can go forward to see where we are with IT. I know it's going to take several weeks before we get the. Hereback from the IT or at least a few weeks. Now, we'll have another discussion, see where the numbers are. I'll reach out to our Health Department. And everything else that everybody has requested. And hopefully we'll get some little bit of feedback and have another update before we pull the trigger on on how do we how we proceed. Once again, I could probably pull off the hybrid meeting, no problem, but if we're the only ones going to be up at the auditorium. There's no sense of going there if we can do it from our table, so or wherever we're sitting, our office and. All right. So anything else before we?
That would be August twenty fourth meeting.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine. Bring it back. We'll have one more discussion on it before we move forward.
The next item on the agenda is council's request to the mayor.
All right, I'm going to start with Counsel McCarthy.
No request to the mayor, just a thank you to the DPW, they over the last.
They, over the last two weeks, they've installed a shower and footwash down the end of Witham Street. And I can tell you, all the people that I'm on the beach with every day really appreciate that. So just kudos to the DPW.
All right, Councilor Pat.
Yes, I'd just like to put on the administration's plate here. Traffic analysis study. We've talked about it, but twofold here. Not only continuing with the 128 slash Eastern Avenue slash school issue, but also the issue of our streets in Ward Two downtown, traffic, parking and et cetera. And we know that the Traffic Commission is, it's wonderful. They have a lot of resources, but they can't, they're not qualified to do a traffic study. And I'd like to ask the administration if we can sit down and see about getting a, an actual traffic study on these issues. It'll, I think it'll be important going forward with the, with the new school. But also, a lot of the issues for traffic with the new school are, you know, corrected with the new school. But there'll be continuing issues in Ward Two. And I'd like to be able to sort of combine this and look at it all together. And this also sort of impinges on the edges of Ward One as well, but mostly in Ward Two. And I'd just like to get it on the administration's agenda to see if we can actually get some real serious traffic data for the benefit of the entire community. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Councilor O'Hara.
Thank you. I just want to remind everyone, the Magnolia Library is hosting a Dana Faber Craft Family Blood Drive on Thursday. And it is from 12:30 to 6:30 PM. Walk-ins are available or you can go on the Dana Faber Craft Family website and make an appointment. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Councilor Nolan.
I'd just like to thank the DPW for all the work they've done in the parks and the beaches. It's been a tough year. It's either been raining or it's been astonishingly hot. And I'd also like to reach out and thank Generous Gardeners. There's not too many city corners that you can go by without seeing someone in a beautiful green apron doing wonderful things to our city. And again, they've worked so hard with the heat and the rain and Gloucester's looking beautiful. I want to thank you all.
Thank you, Sean. Council Memhard.
Nothing for the mayor specifically, but following up on Councilor Nolan's comment. The Generous Gardeners had a very successful garden tour here in East Gloucester. It was just wonderful to see everybody out and about in the neighborhood, walking and getting their tickets and supporting Generous Gardeners and then enjoying each other's hard work and creativity in their gardens. I'd also like to piggyback on thanking the DPW, particularly for the Witham Street showers and accessibility area there. That's a wonderful new innovation. It's been much appreciated. In a same vein, the Briar Neck neighborhood has moved ahead with benefits from a betterment paving project, which was a huge undertaking by the DPW in coordination with a lot of infrastructure and utility work. I'm very grateful on behalf of our constituents in Ward One to know that the Harrison Avenue paving project is finally moving ahead. That was on a list for a long time since some gas work there and utility work. And the neighborhood is, you know, preparing, as these other neighborhoods in the city are, for disruption. But boy, are they looking forward to the end result. And hopefully people won't take advantage of it to speed once we have all the pitches and potholes out of the way. And then finally, on a human interest note, I'd just like to thank Tim Smith and the Piping Clover ambassadors. We have two surviving nests and families at Good Harbor Beach, which is a record. Hopefully they'll make it to the last stages before they head south to migrate. And there's been a lot of volunteer work there, working again with the DPW to keep them safe and protected particularly from trash and seagulls following the trash. So that's the biggest challenge. The dog issue has been largely under control thanks to our efforts to create regulations that, and communicate those regulations. So thank you all.
Thank you, Scott. Council Holmgren.
Yes, I don't have anything for the mayor, but I just want to express my appreciation to the Capitol Police officers who testified today before Congress. It was very brave. And regardless of where you fall on the political spectrum, I truly appreciate their work and their patriotism. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Councilor Cox.
I do have a couple of things. I'd like to have an update on the parking kiosk issue. We're losing a ton of revenue and we're just creating more confusion and ill will than is necessary with this. And if we can please get updates on the city website on a routine basis until this matter is cleared up, the public would be very grateful. I'd also like to have an update on the former gun range, the fill that was dumped there. The people would like to see that removed and cleaned up. They were going to be using that for the berm and it should not be in place. Want to let everybody know the Traffic Commission is actually meeting in person this week, Thursday, 6:00 PM in the first floor conference room. It is going to be their first in-person meeting in a while. And I know there's a lot of handicap requests and other matters that will be taken up. But want to welcome them back to City Hall. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Melissa. Maybe one of us or the administration may reach out to the Traffic Commission and let them know if they have a full house that they could move upstairs into the auditorium. The other day, the Dogtown Preservation Commission had met and we were almost at capacity. And as long as there's a door, a note posted on the door that the meeting has moved upstairs for safety concerns, let's make sure the Traffic Commission isn't jam-packed into that room with 20 people. So that's just a safety precaution, but thank you, Councilor Cox, for making us aware of that. Council Gilman.
I've got a couple of requests. First request to the mayor to continue the process of our Public Works Director's acceptance of private ways to public ways in accordance with MGL Chapter 85 plus GCO Section 21-1 comma 23-35 and Section 21-41, including revisiting the 12 roads that were ready to be voted on by City Council in January 6, 2016. And in addition, another request. I request that the Department of Public Works repair the major potholes on Apple Street, which connects the two city-owned parcels, which includes One Apple Street, which is a 2.86 acre parcel owned by the city, which is skating pond, playground and ball field, as well as 27 Apple Street, which is Corliss Landing, which is a .45 acre parcel owned by the city, which also serves as a state boat ramp and landing routinely. The photos of these potholes were submitted to our Public Works Director this morning. And I'm hoping that we can move forward with that. And then I just have two additional things I just wanted to comment on. First of all, a shout out to the Clerk's Office for their hard work in counting all the nomination forms. Everyone in the Clerk's Office really rolled up their sleeves and helped to get through this process. There were a lot of candidates this year and just a job well done. Joanne, if you would convey that, and I know Sherri's still on the call, but they were just amazing. So thank you. And then the last thing I wanted to say, because I see that Ruth Pino is still on the call, which I appreciate, is that yesterday's flag raising was awesome. Members of the Gloucester 400th Committee, along with local stakeholders, raised the official Gloucester 400 flag for the first time. And I think everyone knows that in 2023, Gloucester will be celebrating the 4,400th anniversary of when settlers landed at St. George Park. And it was a, it was a great day. The mayor and her office took some really nice photos. And the flag by Lynn Parisi, made by, designed by Lynn Parisi was awesome. It was a really, really upbeat day. So thank you so much for those who organized that.
Thank you, Bill. Just to piggyback on what Bill just talked about, the flag raising, my request, as I didn't have any requests until now. Is that anything that's civic-minded for the community? Be pushed back a little bit later in the day for the working folk like myself that couldn't attend yesterday. That would have appreciated being there. Going in the morning or the middle of the day makes it hard for us working staff. So if we can push it back and later in the day, make sure some of us get there or even the working public, I'm sure they'd appreciate more. I'm sure more people would have liked to attend not only the 400th flag raising, but the rainbow flag and everything else that we, that is community-based. If we can kind of move it around to the public's agenda and schedule, it would make things a little bit easier on most of us. So that's my request, but kudos to everybody that showed up yesterday and participated. All right, so that being said, that concludes our city council meeting. So we will be convening into executive session. So in order for the council to go into executive session, the council must adhere to the Massachusetts general laws. In order to do so, as council president, I declare that July 27, 2021, meeting of the city council has been duly posted, has been called to order. We are now in open session and there is a quorum present. But before the city council can vote to go into executive session, the purpose of said executive session must be stated. I declare the purpose of the executive session as follows. Is to discuss litigation strategy in a legal matter. And to discuss this in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the city. I further declare that the intent of the council to not reconvene after the executive session. Motions to go into executive session are by roll call vote and require majority vote of the council. Therefore, I will entertain a motion that we go into executive session with respect to litigation.
So move.
Second.
Removed by Councilor Cox, seconded by Councilor Nolan. So has council president, I hereby announce by roll call vote, so we'll take roll call, Councilor Cox.
Yes.
Councilor Gilman.
Yes.
Councilor Holmgren.
Yes.
Councilor LeBlanc, yes. Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Councilman Memhard.
Yes.
Councilor Nolan.
Yes.
Councilor O'Hara.
Yes.
And Councilor Pat.
Yes.
By roll call vote of nine in favor, zero opposed, we shall now convene into executive session and will not reconvene back into open session. So we are heading over to executive session. I will see you guys in a minute. Thank you.